I didn't see you guys on the side around.
Yeah, with that big of a...
Oh, no. We were with these guys. My neighbors.
It was amazing.
All day. Okay. I mean, it's Sunday, right?
Ah.
It was a fun day Saturday.
We have a meeting now Tuesday, right, tomorrow?
You guys.
Did you guys speak so little things?
No. No, babe.
No. Unless I get tapped to be the President of the United States, I'm not going to work. Come on, come on here. It's been a long week. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down. Just love. Thank you so much. Thank you. I love him. I love the blue and the brown going down.[1104.80]
Speak.
Yep, it works.
Okay, everybody, we're gonna have the meeting here in about a minute or so. Thank you all for coming out tonight. All right, you guys ready to rock and roll? Okay, everybody, let's start this meeting. Welcome to the city of Dania Beach. This is a City Commission organizational special meeting, Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five fifteen P. M. Clerk, could I please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Salvino.
Here.
City Attorney Bootses.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Yavacorm.
Thank you. If we could all please take a moment for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, getting down to business. Item two point one for discussion and possible action is a presentation to Commissioner Tamara James, and this is from our city manager, Anna Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. What a historic, historic evening. Welcome to the great city of Dania Beach. We're still reeling from the great celebration that we had this Saturday. The city turned one hundred and twenty years young, and the best for our city is yet to come. It's a, it's a truly historic night, but I, I want you to take a look at, at that photo over there and take a look at these individuals. I can't see you because of flowers. I was just discussing with the city attorney and the city clerk. Every single one of these individuals behind me at one time had been the mayor of this great city. So you guys are getting it right, and it's been such an honor to be here these past two years with, um, Mayor Ryan and Vice Mayor Llewellyn, that was the mayor when I became your city manager in two thousand and nineteen, and now we have Mayor-elect Joyce Davis, former Mayor Tamara James, former Mayor Marco Salvino, who's now the vice mayor. So it's truly a historic night, and then we have our newly elected Commissioner Louis Romoli, the very first Hispanic commissioner to ever be elected in the city. Congratulations, everyone. We are, we are truly, truly very, very happy to be with you here tonight. So today, bittersweet, I know, for her, because for the past eight years, a big part of our, of Commissioner James, Mayor James', life has been dedicated to this city and to her community, and we've been working together for five and a half years. It seems like it's fifty years because we've gotten so much accomplished, from our strategic master plan to our parks' master plan. There's a shovel in the ground down the street at C. W. Thomas', and I know that that was a dream come true for her. But everywhere you go in this city, you're going to see the hand of Commissioner Mayor Tamara James, and we will miss you. For, for me, as, as one of my bosses, she, she has made me better because she, I'll never forget my first ever commission meeting in my manager's report. She called me the next day and she told me that there was an error in the grammar. At first, I was kind of upset because I want everything to be perfect, but let me tell you something. Every single one of my manager's report is impeccable because she brought that to my attention, and I value that, very much so. But I'll tell you one more little story. I always wanted to do the strategic master plan for our city. She gave me a hard time. She didn't want to do it, but let me tell you, after we did it, she sat here in a public meeting and she said, you know what? I really enjoyed that strategic master plan, and I am so glad that we did it. So we are going to miss you. You've taught me a lot. We've learned a lot from each other, but I know your best, your best is yet to come, and your best years are yet to come. And, and it's really interesting that you have all, all those flowers there because those flowers are gonna need a place to go. Excuse me. We wanted Commissioner Mayor James to never forget us, and whenever she looks at this, I know that she won't. Can somebody come and help, help me? Help, help me? Help, help me? Thank you. Thank you. I'm, I'm a multitasker, but only, I only have two hands. Thank you so much, Ralph. Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, this is the wrong. This goes later. This is the second one. Commissioner James, can, can you join me down here?
Sure.
This is, can you hold the mic for me? This is something, she's got so many awards and so many trophies and so many things that I wanted to make sure that we gave Commissioner James, Mayor James, something that no matter where she goes, she can remember us and make this vase. She always says, I wanna, I want my flowers when I'm alive, and I remember that, you know? You want to remember the things that your bosses tell you. Exactly. It's funny, but my dad used to say the same thing. He didn't want anything when he was dead. So this vase says, hold on, I'm gonna need my glasses for this. You want me to read it?
Yeah. I could, I could read it. We're very good at this. Just.
Yeah. This is like teamwork here.
Wait, is this two pieces?
Yes.
Please, oh, okay, just give me the vase.
Teamwork, teamwork.
In grateful recognition, Commissioner Tamara James, for eight years of leadership and dedicated service, your commitment to progress and community has made a lasting impact to the cities, to the citizens of Dania Beach. City of Dania Beach, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and twenty-four.
Amen. What a blessing. Let's take a picture without, but there's another one here, and then we're gonna get all your colleagues down here for more photos.
Also, this is just the platform.
This is just a platform.
Deion, don't break my vase.
Deion, please take care of this vase.
Take two steps back for me. Yep. Let's do one with you two and then the commission.
Uh, we should go down, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just getting a pre-picture. Yeah. Got it. Good luck.
An N, is that?
An N.
An N. Angle just like.
Like prom, like prom, like prom.
Prom, prom, prom. There we go.
Suck it in as well.
I got that right.
Well, well, pretty messed. You have one more. No, stay, stay. So we have one more parting gift for Mayor James, Commissioner James, and, and it's really something that I know she'll always remember because I know what this means to her, but I think it's something that we should all think about, all of us that are here today, that we are, we are constantly in transformation mode. We are, we are clearly under construction, and every day we have the opportunity to be the best version of ourselves. Thank you. Thank you. Ah. Look at these beautiful girls. We love you guys. Thank you, thank you. Sharon. We, we gotta go off script sometimes here. So Commissioner James has not all, not only impacted us in her position as a mayor and as a commissioner, but also via her organization, the Tamara James Foundation. Um, and as a matter of fact, we're getting ready again next week to be able to give, you know, Thanksgiving Day meals for our community. And, um, I was talking to, to her mom, and we, we were sitting there in my office, and I said, I wanted to give her something else that represents what she has meant to the community and how she has transformed herself and how we all have an opportunity to transform ourselves and become the best version of ourselves. So I wanted to give her something else that represents the butterfly, which is part of what her organization represents, and that great metamorphosis that we all go through to become the butterfly that's within all of us. Here it is. Thank you so much. If you want to say some words, make sure we don't drop any of the.
Yes, but can I, my nose, my feet, can I go back here?
Yes, yes.
No, I want to sit down. My feet hurt.
Let's take one more picture.
One more photo?
Okay.
With the butterfly. Butterflies are free to fly. Fly away. Keep it close. It costs a lot. Two.
Got it.
Wait, wait. Give the microphone away.
It's not yet, Ma. All right, all right.
Thank you.
Deliver him from the face.
Yes.
I'll be right back down. Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few notes that I had, and thank you so much, Anna, for the recognition, the presentation, the beautiful vase, and my amazing butterfly. It really means a lot. Thank you, Ma, for helping. Um, it has been a long eight years. I feel like it has been a turtle race. Uh, but if it's one thing that I have learned about turtle races is that slow and steady gets it done. And so we often think of government as something that we want right now. Think of the rabbit in the gun. We want it right now. We want it right now. But it doesn't happen that way. It happens with consistency. It happens with hard work. It happens with leadership. It happens with teamwork. Um, starting with my family, my friends, my village, uh, who are here today, um, just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you all. From my parents to my grandmother that made her way over here with her Cadillac, and to my son, my, my supporters, my entire village. Could you stand up for a second so I could just say thank you? Thank you. I would not be here without you all. Um, prayers that have gone unanswered and answer prayers, and people just standing by my side, and just a little bit of what we all collectively on this dais together, um, have been able to accomplish and things that, you know, I have initiated here with the support, uh, of this team. And I'll start with Gracefully Aging. That was one of my first babies that we brought here to the city, and it has grown, and I'm so proud of what it has done, and it's expanded to other parks in our city. Um, rebranding, so this big, beautiful D that you all see was something that took a lot of effort, hard work, with the commitment of the community and involvement with Redline Media Marketing. So grateful that we were, we're able to really have this new renaissance because this is a new Dania Beach. Whether we like it or not, it's not the same, um, the same old town, and we're not sleepy anymore. And one of the first things I said is that I wanted Dania Beach to no longer be a pass-through city. So many people, you know, fly into, for a lot of them pass right through Dania Beach to go to Hollywood and Miami, and, but now everyone is stopping here in our city. Spirit Airlines is something that's also, you know, been in Dania Point. I didn't start Dania Point, but I have had the blessings to cut almost every ribbon that has been there. So I have reaped the benefits of the commission prior to me. Uh, from our Youth Advisory Council to our historic infrastructure improvements, southeast drainage projects, um, Lucky Fish that's coming on the beach, um, and some of the things that we've done, even with the patch in the CRA, uh, at-home Dania Beach providing low-income housing for so many of our residents that are needing it. And last but not least, C. W. Thomas Park, which is near and dear to my heart. I grew up right there down the street. My son still catches the bus right there every day, and just looking forward to, um, the amazing things that can be accomplished when we work together as a team. Uh, I can only pray that that teamwork has been filtered down and will continue with our new commission that will be here. I am most certain that that will happen, and don't worry, if I don't like what I see, I'll be back. Because I only know how to do one thing, and that is to serve and be a part of solutions. But I wish everyone the very best of luck. I am so grateful and so thankful for everyone that has supported me, and even the ones who haven't, that have really built me into who I am today. And, um, I just thank God for having this opportunity. Mayor, you have done a fantastic job these last two years, and as you transitioned down to being a commissioner, I just want to say thank you for your leadership, um, and your guidance, and, uh, you've done a phenomenal job. And so congratulations to everyone else, and it is the end of the era of Tamara James.
Uh, I guess, I guess I'll add to that just because I want to say something for you since, uh, we're not gonna be able to talk up on the dais anymore. Um, I know you, I know you'll be around though, and I know you're not far away. So if you ever need anything, you know who to come to, and you have a lot of friends, obviously, up in the city. Um, yeah, Tamara, it's been great to get to know you a lot more. Before, you were just, uh, you know, the mayor and the commissioner that I, that I'd see in passing and just say hey to, and then we've actually become friends. And to see how you lead, to see how you engage with the community, to see your involvement. I know you just reeled off your list of accomplishments, but that's, that's just a small portion. Uh, there's many more accomplishments that this woman has, has made happen in the city, and I can't thank you enough for your friendship, for your leadership, and for your teamwork also. And, uh, I, I look forward to Dania continuing to grow. Look forward to working with the new commission, but we're definitely gonna miss you. I say that on behalf of the entire commission. Thank you. All right. Are you blinking? You're blinking. Okay. Okay. All right, on with that. Oh, Commissioner Salvino.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say a few things because I know you're not gonna be up here anymore, but, uh, you know, it's just, it's been a pleasure to serve with you up here. You've, uh, I've learned a lot. I think we've grown a lot, and I think the city's grown a lot under your leadership as well, and the commitment you give to the residents, to the city of Dania Beach, and I just want to thank you for all the, spending a good time up here with you.
Thank you.
So.
All right. Okay, moving on. Uh, this is a retroactive approval, and this was Commissioner James's item, and she presented a key to the city to A. J. Ryan Realty for the hundredth anniversary on November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, so do I have retroactive approval of this item? Uh, you need a motion first. Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner James?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, that was, um, that was unexpected, but it was a, a great honor, uh, from, for the entire Ryan family, and we definitely thank you, going all the way back a hundred years, generations and generations. All right, moving on, we're gonna go to the acceptance of certification of the general election, and this will be read by our city clerk, Laura Riera.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we received our certi- certified official results from the Broward County Supervisor of Elections, and, uh, number one is Joyce L. Davis with four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven votes. We have. We have Marco A. Salvino Senior with three thousand five hundred and eighty-eight votes. We have Louis Romoli with three thousand fifty-nine votes. We have Coleman Ryan with two thousand seven hundred and forty-four votes. We have Polly Ann Jones with one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four votes. We have Morris Von Stowers with one thousand four hundred and sixteen votes. And we have Gunner Maglioka with one thousand three hundred and ninety-four votes. With that, Mayor, I just need a motion to approve the certified results.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I'll move to approve the, uh, election results.
Commissioner Davis?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion carries. Election is confirmed. All right, moving right along. We are gonna start with our administration of oath of office for our newly elected officials, and we're gonna be, begin with our commissioner-elect, Louis Romoli, and. And Commissioner, Commissioner Romoli is gonna be sworn in by Lacy Romoli Weisel and Alex Romoli.
Yeah, we may, yeah, can we put it in the boxes? Commissioner-elect, any other members of your family that you would have here? Your, your, your son and your, your parents are here? Your mom is here? Oh, okay. So I am going to hand this, well, I just want to let you know that officially, Commissioner-elect Louis Romoli was sworn in earlier today by our city clerk. So that's the official swearing-in, but now this is the ceremonial swearing-in that will be happening by your son and your daughter.
Yes, correct. Go ahead.
Okay, I, Louis, do solemnly swear or affirm that I am a citizen of the United States and a resident of the state of Florida, and by the city of Dania Beach, Florida, and I have all the qualifications as required by the charter for the office. Oh, okay.
Come on, you gotta memorize.
Sorry. Okay. Yeah, that would be great. Okay, love it. I, Louis Romoli.
I, Louis Romoli.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
I solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And of the city of Dania Beach, Florida.
And the city of Dania Beach, Florida.
And have all the qualifications as required by the charter.
And have all the qualifications as required by the charter.
For the office upon which I am about to enter.
And for the office for which I'm about to enter.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Dania Beach.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Dania Beach.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office upon which I am about to enter.
For the office of which I'm about to enter.
This is very humbly. No, it's been, it's been a long road. Campaigning is not any fun, I must tell you. And for all of the candidates that ran this election, I want to congratulate them. It's, it's a very difficult time to be out there and knocking on doors when people don't want your doors, their doors to be knocked on in the heat and the rain. Every weekend is dedicated to really going out there and meeting people and finding out what the concerns are in our cities and, in our city and doing the best you can to address their concerns. So I, I want to thank everybody who supported me, my family, my friends, my work family especially, for without them I could not have been on the road campaigning. So many people to thank and I'm not going to start by naming names because there's just way, way too many people. This process actually started four years ago. For most of you may not remember, I ran in 2022 and lost. So it was difficult, but it was the right thing at that time. God has a plan, I believe, for everybody and that wasn't my time, but this was my time. So I'm really looking forward to serving the residents of Dania Beach. I am going to do everything I possibly can to make the right decisions on behalf of them and also the city. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Tamara James, who is leaving. She spent the last eight years of her life dedicating herself to our city and the results speak for themselves. And again, Tamara, congratulations to you and best of luck on whatever chapter or slide next for you. And I really look forward to working with our new mayor-elect Joyce Davis and our new vice mayor, Marco Salvino. So thank you all very, very much.
All right, congratulations, Commissioner, Commissioner Romoli. Up next, we have our vice mayor-elect Marco A. Salvino Senior and he's going to be sworn in by our city clerk, Laura Riera.
Vice Mayor, any family members that you would like joining you up here? The Salvino family, if you can please come up here?
Don't be shy.
Your sister?
Somebody hold it and then you can raise your hand.
Mike, you don't love me no more?
Whoever he wants. Have whoever you want hold the Bible for you so you can put your hand on it and then raise your other hand.
Or you can do, or you could do it together with your daughter.
You can put your hand on it and then raise your hand? You got to raise it. Okay. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. I, Marco Salvino.
I, Marco Salvino.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And of the city of Dania Beach, Florida.
And of the city of Dania Beach, Florida.
And have all the qualifications as required by the charter.
And have all the qualifications required by the charter.
For the office upon which I am about to enter.
For the office of which I'm about to enter.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Dania Beach.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Dania Beach.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the office on which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Really quick, before you speak, sign there for me and I'll do the rest, just right here.
All right, well, I feel like you just got married. It's taken the oath as, yeah, I'm married. I'm married to the city of Dania Beach and to all its residents for the next four years. I've enjoyed being up here a lot and that's, I'm very, very happy and thankful to all the residents that had voted for me and the ones that did not, I'm going to make you a believer and I'm going to continue to work hard for our city. We've come a long way. Back in 2014, you know, when everything started, you know, I took my criticism when I was the mayor for all the development that was going on, but I can see that Dania Point, you can't even not get in there because everybody's enjoying it so much. And I take, I'll take the stance that it was the right thing for our city. And as we move forward, our strategic master plan has really, really come into play and we've got a lot of things accomplished through that. Thank you, Anna, for bringing that to us and the commission to work and I'm sure they've all agreed to that. But I'm not going to drag it out, but I'm thankful, my family here, I appreciate everybody's support this time. I worked harder than I thought I was going to. The wind was out there blowing, the rain was blowing and I can tell you, I had a lot of support, a lot of support and a lot of fun because there's some fun people out there that really liked the campaign. But again, thank you so much for your support and thank you and I will do and promise you that I'll give you my best. Now I'm going to sing a song.
Okay, congratulations, Vice Mayor Salvino. Let's give him another round of applause real fast. All right. All right. And now up is our new mayor, Mayor-elect Joyce L. Mayor Davis is going to be sworn in by the Honorable Florence Taylor Barner of the 17th Judicial Circuit Judge.
Can we please have Mayor Davis's family? I know that she's so excited that her family is here. BYOB, she brought her own Bible.
Good evening, everyone. Please repeat after me. I?
I, Joyce L. Davis.
I, Joyce L. Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And a resident of the state of Florida.
And of the city of Dania Beach, Florida.
And of the city of Dania Beach, Florida.
And have all of the qualifications.
And have all of the qualifications.
As required by the charter.
As required by the charter.
For the office upon which I am about to enter.
For the office.
Upon.
Upon which I am about to enter.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Dania Beach.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Dania Beach.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
The duties of the office upon which I am now about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And then before that, my father and my, and my community families here, my father's going to say a few words. He has flown in from Chicago just to be here for us and so, Daddy?
Thank you. I want to thank you, the residents, the citizens of Dania Beach for giving Ms. Davis an opportunity these past four years to serve as your commissioner. She worked very hard with organizations and institutions to help continue to build up a very fabulous city. And you rewarded her by giving her the opportunity of becoming your mayor for the next two years. Joyce is the kind of person that will work with all people regardless as to your race or your religion. Joyce is what is known as a servant leader because she believes in the people of this city. You can call on her 24/7. And if she doesn't answer, I'll give you my cell number. And since she works so diligently as your commissioner, she's going to work just as hard, let me back up, she's going to work even harder as your mayor. So I think you have an individual that you can be very proud of and I'm going to give her a good round of applause and if you would do the same thing, I'd appreciate it.
Signed, sealed and delivered.
Thank you, Judge Barner. Thank you, Daddy. And I, and I am a daddy's girl, you all, if you know me at all. I really, first, I want to congratulate Vice Mayor Salvino, Vice Mayor Salvino and Commissioner Romoli. This is not an easy task. You guys work so hard and we're, and I think that with this team, our administration, Dania Beach, you got it right. And you, we are going to work very hard for you in the future and I am so excited to work with all of you going forward for the next four years. I do have to thank first and foremost, from my heart, my heavenly Father, to God be the glory, great things he hath done. I am a daughter of faith. My father is a minister. I grew up in the church. This does not happen without faith from God, from people who have your back, have your corner. And I want to tell you that this, this campaigning, this race, it really showed me who I was and it really showed me who this community was. And this community is the absolute best community in the world. You all rock Dania Beach. Now let's give yourselves a hand. I can tell you that there is a roller coaster of emotions when you're campaigning and there are days when you don't feel like you can just get up one more day. And I had many of those days. I had, I thought I couldn't go on another hour, but somebody from this community would come by and pat me on the back in Publix and tell me, you're doing a good job. Somebody would bring me homemade cookies and say, you can keep going. Somebody would bring us water or barbecue or empanadas. You know, I can tell I'm a foodie, right? So, but I, every time, every single time I was low, my friends from my church family, from Sunrise, my church family, from Ebenezer, somebody would come, a stranger came by and prayed for me. When I was going and canvassing and knocking on doors, you all welcomed me into your home. You gave me frozen banana bread and coffee and pumpkin pie, but you opened your homes to me, you opened your hearts to me, you told me what was on your heart and I listened. And some of you have some of the best ideas, some of you came and braved the rain and the storm and the tents and the wind. While our tents were blowing over, you were there for me, you came through for me and I am going to come through for you. And as I end, I'm going to end with a little story about my father. He doesn't know this. But as, as much as I like, and our city manager knows I like perfection because I just like things to be perfect, I like to be beautiful, so expect our city to continue to be more beautiful because that's what we do. But I always, I was a perfect student. I like to be a good student. I'm still a straight A student right now in my doctorate degree, but when I was 16, just like the twins just turned 16 on Veterans Day, give it up for the twins, they just turned 16. And they have been with me from the beginning to the end, so thank you, Jalen, Jalen. I will say your names because from the signing of qualification until early voting, you guys rocked and stayed with me, so I love you and I thank you. But when I was 16, I got in trouble in school. I was in a private school and I got in trouble and we know how to act. I'm a PK, I'm a preacher's kid, I know how to act, so getting in trouble is really just, doesn't happen, right? So the dean said, I'm going to call your parents. I don't want you to call my parents, I said, but we're going to call your parents, you're going to call your parents. And so the dean called my parents, said, I'm going to call Pastor Davis. Pastor Davis, this is what your daughter did. I'll tell you the trouble a little bit later. This is what your daughter did. And they gave him the phone and they gave me the phone and my father's always been a calm man. He's not, he didn't curse at me, he doesn't curse, he didn't yell at me, he doesn't yell, he didn't call me names, he doesn't call names, but what he did do is get on the phone and he said, Joyce Lynn, your mother and I have lived our entire lives so that you would be proud to call us your parents and we only ask that you do the same. So I have lived my life every day so that my parents would be proud to call me their daughter and I want you to know that I'm going to work hard every single day so that you will be proud to call me your mayor. Thank you so much.
So this part is the seating of the elected officials. We're all going to change seats. Before we do this, I just wanted to say, the government, the how our system works in Dania Beach is very unique. The way that we have a mayor and the, and we're at large and we have The way that we have a mayor in the high, and we're at large, and we have the highest vote getter becomes mayor, and then they naturally step down, become, um, a commissioner. A lot of people ask questions about that form, but if you ask me, I think it's a great form of democracy, and if anything, it sets a good example for other cities, uh, that we don't just have a district where we care about one specific part of our city, we care about the entire, entire city, each commissioner, so we're not jockeying for one specific area. And secondly, I, I like that it's at large as well, because the person with the most votes becomes mayor, and second most votes is vice mayor, and third is commissioner, and it makes sense, as opposed to having just someone run for mayor, and then you kinda have just commissioners running. So I think it puts the most qualified individuals in their seat, and I think it keeps the commission fresh and moving along with new ideas as well. So I love Dania Beach. It's been an extreme honor of my life to serve the city that I grew up in and was born and raised in. As you know, my family's been here for god knows how long, so... And I'm raising, I'm raising the fifth generations of Danians, uh, in this city as well, so it's been great to work with the Commission, with the city staff. I've made many, many, many new friends, many new, um, many new neighbors and residents. I, I've gotten to understand their issues, and like I said, I can't say it enough, it's just been one of the greatest, deepest honors of my life as mayor, and I really look forward to serving as commissioner for the next two years. So thank you very much. And now we'll move on to the seating of elected officials.
Yes. So at this time, can we please have a round of applause for our Commissioner James and her eight-year term? And at this time, Commissioner Ryan, can you please take your new seat?
All right.
Commissioner Llewellyn, can you please take your new seat? Yes. And at this time, can we have Commissioner Romoli, please take his seat at the dais? Vice Mayor Salvino, can you please take your seat at the dais?
Thank you. Is this it? It's been a long time since I've been to the center stage.
Are we settled? Are we ready? Okay. Mayor Davis, can you please take your seat at the dais?
Okay.
And at this time, I'd like to introduce you to your mayor, vice mayor, and city commission.
Meeting adjourned.
Crack me up, Joyce. You're pumped, aren't you?
It's just, it's just beautiful.
Thank you for, thank you, thank you for swearing me up. I appreciate it.
Star, how you doing? And congratulations to Ava. I was hoping they would be here. I'm so proud of her.